...to order for the Minatrista City Council for Tuesday, February eighteenth, excuse me. But if you will please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Cheryl Fisher, the mayor. To the left is our council members, Mark Vanderlinde, Anne Hunt, Arlene Donahue, Bob Christians, and our city engineer, Mark Erickson. To my right is the city staff, just wandering around. The city administrator, Mike Funk, the city financial director, Brian Brim, the city planner, or community development director, as I should call him now, David Abel, our assistant director, Mark Maroni, Mike Maroni, and our chief of police, Paul Falls. Our city clerk is at the desk taking minutes, and I think we will now begin. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I have one addition, which is a presentation supposedly under item three, it would be three B, from Bob Brown from Bolton and Mankaming, has a presentation on a proposal that they are giving us. Other than that, it just kind of goes the way it's already printed, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as well. My second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Persons to be hired. Heard, are there any persons?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Crystal Jensen from Morganser, that must be Hunter's Crest, about water.
I brought this just for a visual.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members and staff. Thank you for the time and attention you are putting into solving our water issues. It is greatly appreciated. Today, I am also so very thankful for the council members who put the brakes after the February third meeting. I have to admit that I was baffled as to why the decision was not made that night. But then again, I was also baffled at the special meeting beforehand as to why I only saw one presentation from one agency, WSB. I just assumed the research had already been done, and WSB was the best candidate possible. Since then, I have learned that WSB was the only agency involved in the project, and that our very own city engineer works for that agency. I understand why that would have been a good place to start. It's convenient, and Minatrista has used WSB for multiple other construction projects in the past, most recently the roundabout on Highway seven. But I and other Hunter's Crest residents would like to see more opinions, numbers, and pilots gathered from other consultants. Hopefully consultants that specialize solely in drinking water and water sustainability. It is not fair to the taxpayer to only be given one option. Approving, moving forward with the designs on the gravity filtration system would mean to me that you are putting a Band-Aid on the water situation by merely getting rid of the iron and magnesiums that cause the massive amounts of phone calls to you daily. Since December third, when I had neon orange water coming from my faucets, I have become overly involved in this situation. Most of the residents of Hunter's Crest I talked to are not merely as worried about what their water looks like anymore, but are more concerned about what is inside of our water. We deserve the peace of mind that the water we are drinking is not the clearest it can be, but also the absolute cleanest it can be. We all assume the city is taking every possible action to keep us safe. If you move forward with the gravity filtration plant today, you are voluntarily exposing residents to a list of harmful chemicals including radium, arsenic, chlorides, phosphates, TCEs, pharmaceuticals, and other pollutants, all of which are linked to causing weakened immune systems, cancer, and birth defects. Please take the time to gather more pilot studies, wrap the pros and cons, and put all the correct numbers in front of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay. The next item is three, which is the special presentations, but I don't see our senator here yet, so we will ask Mr. Brown to go first. Would that be all right with you, Mr. Brown?
Certainly.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Robert Brown. I'm the vice president of Bolton Mink in charge of our water and wastewater operations services. This evening, I think everyone has a copy of the proposal that was submitted to you, so maybe I can just briefly go through the scope of work and the purpose of this value engineering proposal, and then answer any questions, or maybe...
Go ahead.
Can I be fine?
That'll be fine. We just got this today. I just got this this afternoon, so we'd appreciate you going through it, and then, of course, we will go through it as well.
Sure. The concept is to do a value engineering study on the proposed water treatment facilities. What this value engineering does is it looks at, at this point in the project, it looks at all viable alternatives, it gives a second look at what was proposed, it sort of do a little brainstorming on the process you have, come up with alternatives, cost those alternatives out, and then present some recommendations on what we would recommend moving forward on this project.
Okay.
The value engineering team is really comprised of a lot of experts in the water treatment field. Gordon Kulp is going to be the value engineering team leader, and Gordon has fifty years' experience. He lives in Las Vegas. He's the author of U.S. EPA Value Engineering Documentation. Gordon essentially wrote the documentation for how to present, how to do a value engineering. It was back when EPA had a lot of grant money for the wastewater. And what the Congress wanted to do, a project over five million dollars, they wanted to make sure that they had a second look at those projects, make sure they got the best value for it. So Gordon developed the documents that was used throughout the country to do these value engineering, anything over five million dollars. Gordon has done many value engineering studies throughout the country, and is a known expert in this area of water treatment studies. So Gordon would be the value engineering leader, and he would lead the workshop. The workshop's going to be a very intense time of three days. So essentially, we bring the experts in. We have a three-day workshop. Outline, the first day is really, first morning is gathering information that we would have, asking for certainly where are the boundaries as we get in to look at this, what is off-bound, what has you already looked at, and then at that point in time, we'll do the brains session, look at the various options that we have for water treatment that would be applicable to the city. From there, then we'll do the investigation phase, look at all those options that we put on the board, and make sure which one's more viable, do a cost-effective alternative, pluses and minuses for each one of those, and come up with recommendations. So this is a very intense three-day workshop that presents all the options, alternatives, and at the end of those three days, a presentation would be given on the options, and a report would follow up.
So at the end of three days, you would give us recommendations as to what are the best options, and who would be involved in this study, and for the three days, where would it be held, and what, you know, who would be participating besides the experts? I understand you're bringing experts in.
Sure. We really need participations of your city engineer. We need, we have to have a lot of background information, of course.
Sure.
Without the background information, our study would be sort of not as useful.
Right.
Also, we need direction for the city council on what your goals and objective of providing water treatment. You know, is it providing only X, or you would like to provide XY? So that would give us some range of alternatives that we can look at.
Okay.
Is it water reuse? Is it providing soft water, providing the best quality water? What's the whole range, what you'd like us to look at, so we have directions that from the city council, and that's what you'd like to provide to your citizens.
Sure. Absolutely.
And then, so we'd have experts, a variety from our firm, as well as we have a contractor on our value engineering team that would just give a look at construction costs, that has done this many a time, so it gives an outside look at actually a contractor that has worked on these types of projects. Also have operations, people that have actually run water treatment plants, to look at the cost of running a water treatment plant. So again, capital cost is one element, operation maintenance is another element, especially with a large capital investment in any kind of water or wastewater project. First-end costs, but there's also that ongoing operation maintenance cost that has to be considered, so...
Are these estimates, the construction costs and then the maintenance costs, or you're just giving us a ballpark figure, or you go exactly?
You know...
For our city, I don't mean...
This is at the study. Obviously, there's no plans and specs-
Right.
-have been provided, so we're taking it from our experience, from Mr. Kulp's experience on a number of wastewater water treatment plants that we have provided, and actual operating costs, so...
Okay.
So a combination of all the experts, their ideas and thoughts, and, you know, actual experience as well.
Council member Hunt brought it to us, and she said something about a two-week timeframe. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes. Just because of the nature of the project, my understanding, we'd like to do this value engineering study as soon as possible, and also because of scheduling on Mr. Kulp's and ours too. So we'd like to do this study next week.
Okay. And is the two-week timeframe kind of general, or is it just helpful, or...
Oh, no. I mean, the whole study is very intense, short period of time, and the recommendations would be given after the third day with a follow-up report, just detailing more of the, our thoughts, our worksheets, you know. A number of different worksheets will be put together in the report, this outlining, here's how we develop this cost, here's this concept, here's the pluses and minuses of this, this is what we investigated for this. So it'll be a whole bunch of worksheets on top of the report. On the third day, we'll just give you a briefing of, here's what we see, and then we'll follow up within the next two weeks of a formal report.
Okay. Before I go to the council, does staff have any questions for Mr. Brown? No? Counsel, any questions or any comments for Mr. Brown? If not, we do have to have a motion, right, to establish that there will be such a study, and that we will pay for it, and how much, and when, if you can get that much.
Well, the proposed cost is ten thousand dollars plus travel for Mr. Kulp, correct?
Yes.
So if nobody has any, if nobody has any questions, then I'll make a motion to go forward with the value engineering services.
I just have one more question. You just, you said ten thousand dollars plus travel for Mr. Kulp. Is, are we paying anyone else at this point, or is he the only one?
He's the only one that we're doing travel.
Yes.
Okay.
Except his work.
Excuse me, I have one question. Bob, what is the consisted in the travel? Are you talking, is there a per diem, hotel stay, airlines?
No, strictly the expensive airlines, hotels. That's what we're talking about.
And that's for a two-week, one week?
No, that's for three days.
Three days.
Oh, just for three days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, again, go ahead then. That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing.
And then Mark Erickson would be involved, and then people from the council can attend.
Yes, we're encouraging.
Well, they would want information from us, I'm sure.
It's an open forum, and we've, obviously, the more information that we can obtain, the better that our thought process will focus on exactly what the needs and the wishes of the city council.
How long do you expect our engineer to be involved, all three days, or, I mean, he does have a schedule, I'm sure, and he, we have to pay him as well, so...
Sure. I think the first day is really the most important day, just to provide the background information for us as we get going on the study, you know. And part of this time also, we make sure that this is what we looked at, this is the reason why we looked at it, that type of process right up front.
Okay.
And then the remaining workshops is really developing costs and so forth. So that time is pretty intense for the value engineering team. But again, if we have questions, if we'd like to share out the resources of the city staff, they'll be able to answer questions.
To get them answered right away. Exactly. Okay, that's, that's, that's great. Like I said, I just got mine today, so I'll be reading that when I go home tonight.
Does that work for you, Mark?
Yes, this is a relatively important matter, as we all are aware and so on. I certainly will make myself available to make sure I'm there for whatever is needed, first day certainly, and likely, whatever's needed. If it's all three days, I'll certainly make sure myself is available.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that.
Do you know what dates these would be?
We're targeting Wednesday through Friday next week.
Good.
And in a certain time, at City Hall, is that what we're saying?
No, it's in Chaska.
Oh, Chaska.
Yeah. The space is sort of really, it's up to, up to us to decide what are the best spaces. We do have space in our Chaska office or other offices. We just need to have, you know, computer access and so forth as we develop these costs, so some of our support staff would be helpful. But we're open to any other location that may be more...
Well, we're not too far from Chaska. I don't know if that makes any difference. I'm more curious as to how much time each day, you know, what is the timeframe, so our staff knows too.
I, I think the first day, like Wednesday morning, if you look at the outline a little bit, let me just walk you through that a little bit for you. It's on page, it's on page three of section one. So the first morning there is Wednesday AM, just the introduction again of the value engineering team, and then project presentation by the city and staff. That means project description, the function, constraints, like I talked about, what are our constraints, you know? Do what, what kind of water quality, what's, don't look at this, because we already did that, and we threw this one out, so what are our really restraints and boundaries that we can do brainstorming and think with ideas and thoughts to provide you the best results for what you want. And so that would be the first morning, and then the afternoon is the creative ideas that we get together, sort of a good brains session, all the ideas. And Thursday, again, continue ranking of those best thoughts we have, advantages and disadvantages, and then investigation phase begins on Thursday. And again, typically, these goes in ten, twelve, you know, they go into the evening.
Sure.
So after dinner, so this is, like I said, pretty intense, but it does go into as much time as possible. And then Friday, we complete it, put together, I think we'll put together a short PowerPoint presentation on our thoughts, and then we would have, give that presentation.
Okay.
So, and then follow up with a report.
Thank you very much. And were you going to make a motion about this, then, so we can get it...
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to, to accept these value engineering services for next week.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Bolton and Mink's value engineering services study at the price of ten thousand dollars plus travel for Mr. Kulp, and we will meet within three days next week, probably in Chaska. Otherwise, let us know, okay?
Yeah, and you'll give us the exact time to do that.
Yes, and directions and so forth. One other thing before we, typically what we have is a list of information that we would like to...
An idea that tomorrow.
Just, just received that today, so we'll make sure we prepare that in advance.
Yeah, if we could get that sooner, that we could probably distribute to our project team, so they could get a little heads up on, on some of the information. So when they come next Wednesday, they'll, they'll be pretty well-prepared and understanding of the project, the scope, and what the, what we need to work on.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And on that note, I have two pieces of information for you.
You have to do it?
All right.
I'll give it back.
Conversation already, so, thank you very much.
All right. This motion on the fly, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Well, thank you, Mr. Brown, for coming this evening, and we will see you next week.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure. Thank you. We're expecting our senator to arrive at some time, probably a little bit later. Are we, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approval of minutes and of the special meeting and the regular meeting for February third, approve, well, no, they, I'm sorry, item C has been removed, that contract is not ready. Item D, which is approving the EDA enabling resolution. E, approve the resignation of John Watson from the planning commission. F, request for review and comment on the city of Orno's comprehensive plan amendment changing land use designation of Lakeview Golf Course at four oh five North Arm Drive. And G, which is a resolution calling for the prepayment and redemption in part of the city's general obligation improvement bond, series twenty thirteen A.
I would like to pull item F.
Okay.
Otherwise, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written without F.
Okay, second. It's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. Then we'll pull F. I don't know if I have mine on here, but go ahead, Mark, if you have it.
I was just kind of curious. I don't know, David, if you can give us a little bit of update of what's happening there with the golf course.
Sure. Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, the city of Orno did receive a comprehensive plan amendment request from an applicant who's looking to buy the Lakeview Golf Course. The city of Orno's comprehensive plan and its zoning map were not consistent with that specific piece of property. It was guided in their comprehensive plan as open space, but it was zoned residential for development, so the two did not match one another. So the applicant made a request to ask for that comp plan amendment, and the Orno City Council did formally approve that comprehensive plan amendment. And what they're doing right now, as required per state statute, when you do a comprehensive plan amendment, you allow for outside agencies to comment on that amendment process. So all adjoining communities, any other, the watershed district and others, DNR would be copied on this request to provide feedback and comment on that comp plan amendment. Once those, that sixty-day review timeframe is up, they take those comments and officially submit that to the Metropolitan Council, and that then allows the city of Orno to officially change their comprehensive plan, because they've gone through that sixty-day review timeframe. So that is what this request is from the city of Orno per their comp plan amendment.
So does the mid-council, do they have ultimate decision on this amendment?
They do need to seek approval from the Metropolitan Council on this as well.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I was just kind of curious what was, I attended one of their meetings a month ago or so. Kind of curious where they were at at that.
One of the requirements of the Metropolitan Council is the sixty-day review period. So that's why they're asking for outside agency comments, so that they can submit that to the Metropolitan Council for their consideration as they approve or look at the comp plan amendment request.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, if you could, if you, you keep us updated as this thing goes along. I was curious to see how this is going to come out.
Absolutely.
It's been pretty controversial in that neighborhood, so...
I think you'll see it in the paper as well.
I think the two-acre zoning is very interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Like you say, it's going to be interesting how that comes out.
Okay, so did you want to approve or just accept it, or whatever?
Yes, make a motion to approve item F in the consent agenda as written.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion will carry five zero. The next item is public carries, of which there are none. Item six is the business items. So we'll start with the official naming of the former Camp Kingswood property by Three Rivers Park District. David, is that you? Okay.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you all may recall, the former Camp Kids, Kingswood property was purchased from the United Methodist Church and became one of the first major Three Rivers Park District acquisitions in about nearly twenty years. The property remains closed to the public during their demolition and landscape restoration phases of their project, but it is anticipated to open on a limited basis this spring of 2014. As such, there is a formal request for a sanctioned facility name for the site. That, they use that for promotional materials, their signage, their website. This actually, too, will go to the Metropolitan Council to be incorporated into the regional park plan as well. So as such, what, what Three Rivers Park District staff is recommending, and what the park board, Three Rivers Park Board is considering, is the name Kingswood Park. There, there was a formal request from the former property owner for that name, and the park board had a preliminary review of this name on February sixth, and they'll be looking to officially adopt the name pending recommendation from council at their February twentieth meeting. So the action item before you this evening is to provide feedback or input on the name being Kingswood Park being the formal sanctioned name of the Three Rivers Park acquisition within the city of Minatrista. Looking for a motion and/or comments that you'd like us to provide to Three Rivers Park District staff on that name.
Thank you, David. Questions for David, or do you have a motion?
No, I think it makes sense to continue the name. It has a historic name.
Right. It's been a landmark for years, and everybody knows where it's at, so... So what do you need?
I needed a motion approving that name.
Make a motion to approve the name for Camp Kingswood to be Kingswood Park.
Second. It's been moved and seconded then to rename Camp Kingswood and call it Kingswood Park for Three Rivers Park District. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry five zero. Next item is B, which is the branding discussion with eleven. Now, I don't see Mr. Hesberg. Was he coming this evening?
He is not, Madam Mayor.
Should I take him off the agenda, or is somebody else?
I, I'm here, we're going to present.
I'll present.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, starting on page thirty-six of your packet is the staff report and subsequent proposal provided to us by the firm eleven. The recommended city council action is a motion to approve the agreement with eleven, and I'll summarize for you what this discussion involves. As you know, during our strategic planning workshop held in January two thousand and thirteen, and reaffirmed again earlier in our work session today, one of the, one of the areas the council has discussed is the need to update our mission statement. As we've recognized, we want to take a look at where we are as a city today, and where do we envision the city in the future. Part of that process is also going through a branding exercise. It's really kind of identifying who we are as a community. The city council appointed council member Hunt and Mayor Fisher to work with staff regarding this process, and provide some recommendations to you as a full council as to where we see this process going. And so certainly, Ms. Hunt or Mayor Fisher can also chime in, as they've been part of these meetings. We've met with, as you just mentioned, Mr. Tony Hesberg. He's the owner and president of the company eleven. They are based out of Eden Prairie, but Mr. Hesberg is a local resident of Minatrista. And so we've been, as the three of us, been meeting with Mr. Hesberg on what type of process would be most economical and feasible, given where we are as a community. So in this process outlined for you, there is a proposal in which Mr. Hesberg would look to help the city, what we call in terms of a step one. And part of the step one or phase one of the process is to really pull together a database of information. It's going to consist of probably a small working group beyond council member Hunt, Mayor Fisher, myself, but look to pull together, as I say, a database of information in that that's going to be really the framework that we would need as a, as a city to really go on to what's part of step two. And step two is going to be a more involved process in terms of unveiling and really going through a full-blown branding process. Mr. Hesberg, in his proposal, has, has given us a really discounted rate. There's a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour with an estimate of eleven to eighteen hours to complete that initial phase one. The estimated amount of time or the estimated cost in is about sixteen hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-seven hundred. We would, as staff, recommend that we use our reserves to pay for this initial study. And really, at this point, what we see is a, as a positive outcome in working with Mr. Hesberg is that, again, we'll be able to really set the stage moving forward with our branding effort. One of, one of the things, and maybe just backing up a little bit, one of the things that, that we've seen and we discussed, and, you know, the three of us, is what other cities have done. And there's been some other cities in the last year in the metro that have gone through a branding exercise, and there's been some very expensive-type processes undertaken. The city of, I think, Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center went through a hundred and fifty thousand dollar process. In talking with Mr. Hesberg, we think there's, this is a more practical way to approach it with, and getting a similar outcome, is that a lot of the, a lot of those, a lot of those dollars and upfront work that tends to go into processes like this is consulting dollars, obviously. But Mr. Hesberg, in, in working with us, we think that we can, through this initial phase one, this minimal, what we would say is a minimal investment, is to then help us gather what we need to help craft what we think would be in phase two, an RFP, more of a request for proposal, where we are able to give much of that data to firms, and eleven might be one of those that would participate in that. But certainly, having eleven gather that for us upfront will save us a tremendous amount of money. eleven gather that for us upfront will save us a tremendous amount of money. So, there's the proposal in your packet. Again, the motion or the recommended motion is to approve that agreement with eleven. And with that, I would certainly let Ann or Cheryl chime in with anything I've missed.
Well, I think we went the right route. I think you got him going, and he's a friend of Ann's, and I, I think he's pretty low-key, at least the first time that I saw him, but I think we're on the right track, at least for the first place.
Yeah, I think so too. He's got a sort of a patented branding process that he's gonna walk us through, so he's, he's guiding us through it, and I, I think it's, you know, I'm pretty frugal, but I think this is money well spent, and I, I think that it'll, I think what will result is worth a lot more money when we come out of it, and I think it's, we have a lot of that information already, and we just need to put it into a form that will help us get to the next step.
And then, if we, if we agree or disagree, it doesn't really matter, if we go out for RFPs and he is included or whatever, we'll find out what we're gonna see for this area, so.
Sure. Okay, I need a motion though.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with eleven.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the branding motion, or the motion about branding with Hesberg, who is with the company eleven. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion will carry five zero. Next item on the agenda is the noise ordinance, or discussion, anyway. Is that you, Mike, or is that?
Madam Mayor and council, we'll turn it over to both Mr. Falls and Mr. Abel, who will provide more detail.
Thank you.
I can start, Madam Mayor and members of council. On page forty-two of your packet is a copy of section one zero zero five, which is our noise ordinance regarding construction activity. As per earlier in the year, we had some issues out at the Woodland Cove development. On our list of discussion topics was this item, so wanted to provide you with, with what our ordinance currently says, first of all. Secondly, just, just as an FYI, as to what, what this page is as well, is every new home and/or actually any construction activity permitted, permitted activity that comes through the city gets a copy of this with their permit. Each permit that goes out, that's, that's correct, yep. And that's, of course, more dealing with your actual builders and contractors. One of the, the issues we were dealing with on the Woodland Cove property was a little bit different, because those were actual excavating work, excavation type contractors doing work out there, where they may not have specifically received this noise ordinance handout, but this also gets shown in the, what we call the subdivision agreement with each new subdivision that goes out there. So, there's different layers of this, of course, as we talk about the noise ordinance. So, I guess looking, looking for some direction from council as to if, if they'd like something changed with the noise ordinance and/or from an enforcement standpoint, I can turn it over to Paul to provide a little bit of history and background on what has been done with the noise ordinance in the past.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Abel. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think David did an excellent job of kinda prefacing this topic, and I think before we dive too much into the ordinance itself, I think it's important that we, maybe I give a little background and put some perspective here. Certainly, we've had, we have a considerable amount of new developments coming in the very near future, which sparked this whole discussion with an incident that occurred in the, of the Kings Point Road development last year. And so, with that, in response to that, I went and pulled a bunch of numbers here to see just how many violations we've had or complaints we've had over the last three years for construction-related noise. So, this is just limited to construction-related noise. And in two thousand and eleven, we had two, two complaints. Two thousand and twelve, we had five, and then in two thousand and thirteen, we had three, one of which was the one-off of Kings Point Road. So, as you can see, the, the number is, is very low to date, and the vast majority of these to date have been not developer-related incidents, more private issues with people running equipment or working on their own homes, the, the, things of that nature. And so, I think when I look at this ordinance, our current ordinance, from an enforcement standpoint, I think the ordinance even, in and of itself is, is more than adequate to handle the, the violations if, if they should occur and we were to get called. This certainly gives us the tools we need to respond and then take enforcement action if that's necessary. With that said, though, I think that there's another piece to this, and I think David touched on this, I kinda see it as a two-pronged approach, in that when we have new developments that are coming in, they get a copy of, of the ordinance. I think the developer gets a copy, most of the vendors there, or the subcontractors that work for them get a copy of the ordinance, and then maybe we can go even further with these larger developments, where there's gonna be lots of vendors or subcontractors coming into the development, and maybe we can post signage, permanent signage during the, you know, course of the construction, that would, that would relay this noise ordinance information as well, so that all those subcontractors and their employees can't say that I was not aware of that. They literally have to drive right by it to get to their work site, and I think that would make enforcement even easier. I also think that would cut down on the number of violations, which would be, you know, that's our goal, is to prevent this from occurring in the first place, is our ultimate goal. So, so with that, I, I guess I would turn it over to the council if you have any questions or comments or concerns or something you'd like me to cover in addition to this.
Okay, just a minute, David had his hand up, and then Mike had his hand up, and then you guys, I guess.
Just one other thing to, to add to what Paul said, is we, we are working with the developer on the Kings Point Road project. They did give us a preliminary proposal as to what the signage that Paul was referring to would look like, and we asked for some modifications to that, but certainly, as, as we've discussed earlier, from a policy standpoint, with any new developments, it's going to be required that a sign like this be installed, to be determined by staff where that location is, to, to ensure that contractors, subcontractors that are coming into the site can clearly see there's a sign saying that this ordinance will be enforced. So, we're working with that on, on the Kings Point Road development, meaning that it's already underway, so we'll get that signage up before any building permits will be issued. We've told them that we will not issue them until you get the signage up, and then any future development that comes in, the signage would also hold true, that would have to be installed, so, one, one thing to add to that.
Thank you very much. Mike, did you want to add something?
Mr. Abel covered my comments, yes.
Madam Mayor, if I could add one more thing, I think, I think it's safe to say as well that we do have limited staff, but with that being said, we work very closely with the planning department and the, and the public works department, engineering department, so just knowing that we have all this new development coming in, we, we're gonna work very closely to, with the timing of these subcontractors coming in and provide as much extra patrol as we can as well. But that is limited, so that's why I think the signage and just getting that word out there that this, these are the rules and we expect them to be followed, is very, very important, but we'll provide extra patrol, and, and if need be, if they choose to ignore that, we can certainly go to the enforcement level as well. And our ordinance allows us to do that.
But getting the signs out early should, should.
Should help, yes. That should cut down on the violations considerably.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have one comment, if I could make one. Is it necessary, or would it be necessary, to address under a catastrophe situation? Because many times catastrophes don't happen during those hours, they happen after seven or holidays or weekends. Frequently, our company is called out midnight, holidays, Sundays. Should there be something addressed for that ordinance to have in there for, for a situation like that, a catastrophe situation?
That would be, that's a very good question. I think under the circumstances, certainly if, if the police were called to respond, I think there's a, under exigent circumstances, we see this all the time at fire scenes or sometimes storm damage, where in the middle of the night, you simply have to board something up or, or cover a roof, because you don't wanna cause further damage. I think in those situations, there would certainly be an exemption, and I think we would do a.
Should that be noted in here at all, or is it not necessary?
I, I don't believe it's necessary, and we would, we would complete a report that would indicate the exigency and why that work was being done, so we would be able to track it that way.
Thank you.
And if I may, just to comment on that too as well, Mayor and council, it does have a clause in the current ordinance that states that unless otherwise approved by the city council, so it gives our hours of operations, but it also gives you, the council, the flexibility to, on a case-by-case situation, take a look at that and extend and/or approve additional hours. So, if something, as Paul Falls brought up, if something like that were to occur, they'd certainly address it, document it, and it could then be, you know, talked about by council as well as an approved activity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As far as enforcement, can we hold the developer liable? I mean, most of development like this, most of them is, they're gonna be subcontractors of Maddy Homes, and obviously, Maddy Homes has a lot of control over their subcontractors. Can we hold the developer responsible for this, if there's any violations on their job sites?
I, I believe that's more of a question for the, the city attorney, but I can tell you from an enforcement standpoint that, based on the ordinance and all the efforts we're going through as a city to make this known, what would happen is, is if the police are called and we get there and there's a violation, and they've been warned, and the signage that will be posted there will be the warning, that we, we would issue a citation to whoever's violating that ordinance. So, whether it be the developer themselves, or their subcontractor, or an employee of that subcontractor, that just trickles down, all the way down to, to whatever level it ends up at. And I think our ordinance would allow us to cite whoever's violating it at that time.
Or can we put it in a developer's agreement?
Yeah, council member Vanilini and Madam Mayor, council, yeah, I think, I mean, we could certainly write something like that into the subdivision agreement that we, you the council approve at the time of final plat. There though, would have to be some sort of end date to that. As a developer, one of the examples we talked about earlier was Hunter's Crest, where there's no longer a developer involved in that development, there's now just builders out there. So, you can't, you know, you'd have to have some sort of sunset date or, or completion, so, you know, so much percentage of the homes have been built or something, that I think we'd have to, you know, work out with the developer, but we certainly would have to come up with some language, and of course, the developer would have to agree to that too. It's an agreement between the city council and the developer, so we're, we're open to negotiation at that point, when you get into a subdivision agreement. So, we, we as staff will certainly, if that's the desire of council, we certainly would incorporate that into our next subdivision agreement as that comes forth to council.
Do you think that's really necessary, since the person who violates it is the person who's got the citation?
Well, the only thing is, as a person that is a subcontractor for a lot of contractors, if I violate this, and I'm gonna pay my hundred and forty-four dollar fine or whatever it is, if the contractor I'm working for comes to me and says, you know, either you quit this, or you're not gonna work here anymore, what do you think's gonna be of bigger influence? The hundred and forty dollar fine, or this contractor that says, you will not work here again for me if you don't knock this off? I mean, I think that's gonna pull a lot more weight, I mean, there's a possibility of losing a contract over this.
Yeah.
Other than just a small fine.
I don't know, I mean, I don't quite understand. On every situation that you deal with in Mark, as you know, the general contractor's ultimately responsible. I mean, that's the person that you get to, is the general contractor, because that general contractor is responsible for not only the subcontractors, but his own employees. So, if somebody's doing something wrong, the ticket needs to go to the general contractor.
Well, and that's what I'm saying to the developer, which Maddy is the gen, general contractor on Woodland Cove, or at least they're part of it anyway.
I think at least for the beginning, I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Madam Mayor and council, I just wanna add that in subdivision five of our noise ordinance, there is a civil remedy section down here, and, and our city attorney isn't here to comment on, on the details of this, but the section allows for enforcement by injunction, action for abatement, or other appropriate civil remedies, and I think that kinda gets at, that developer piece of that.
Okay, that's covered in there.
So, that would be an option as well, especially in, if it is a, a repeat problem, it just doesn't go away.
All right, I mean, I, I don't think we normally go that way, but unfortunately, what happened last fall, that's where it ended up. It ended up going to Maddy, because the contractor would listen to our staff.
Right.
And I think it worked. There was a little hiccup along the way, but I think they got the message that, you know, we're serious about, you know, protecting our residents.
Right, and I, I think a, a number of surrounding communities that have had far more development use a very similar system, and, and this ordinance violation, the noise ordinance violation isn't any different than any other ordinance violation, and so that's typically when there's a violation, it's called to the police, they respond, they document what they find, and then they take appropriate enforcement action. So, this is, while this issue is very specific, it's really not handled much differently than any of the other ones.
I think if we adopt this, at least we're in the door, you know, and then if we find that they were having more problems than that, there may other, be other things that we wanna address besides what we're talking about right here, so we might use this to start with. At least it's certainly probably good enough for everything, but.
Well, yeah, I suppose Chief Falls feels that he's got the tools to control this.
Well, he helped with this, so I'm assuming, or approved of it, so I'm assuming he did, I don't know.
One, one additional point of clarification, there is no work on holidays as well, but it doesn't clarify what holidays, and I, I wanted to make sure, you know, you know, we had, we had someone request to do some work yesterday, and we indicated that, you know, right now, under the ordinance, it doesn't identify, and so we played it safe and indicated that they would need to work today rather than yesterday. And so, some of these holidays are, you know, everybody has off, whether it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, Fourth of July, those type of activities, but do we wanna clarify whether President's Day or Veterans Day, things like that, where a lot of contractors do typically work? Do we wanna clarify which holidays we don't allow work to take place, or do we wanna stick to all holidays, and, or do we wanna identify them? It might be helpful for, for staff to give clear direction.
I, I agree with you on that one, Mark. There are certain holidays where some of them do not shut down, like yesterday.
Sure, well, there's lots of people that work on those holidays. I mean, the government doesn't work on President's Day, and we don't work on, you know, whatever other day.
I don't know if it should be all holidays, I mean.
Yeah. What do you think? Staff, come on. Throw it out there.
You know, staff has talked to some extent on that, and I think, you know, the, the ones that we had thought about was Thanksgiving, Christmas, Fourth of July.
Memorial Day.
Yeah, Memorial Day. I think those are really some of the key ones. Memorial Day, you know, a lot of, a lot of traffic and, I'm trying to think if there's additional ones.
I'm looking for the Fourth of July, that doesn't usually fall on Sunday.
Five.
There's a lot.
Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years.
Easter.
New Years.
I, I guess I'm looking at just follow season, I'm wondering within those five.
Well, then, if you wanna, if you wanna adopt, then add that right now.
It's natural. But typically, those five are noted.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think Mr. Erickson brought up a good point. From an enforcement standpoint, if there's a, a question of, as to what exactly is a holiday, it's, it's probably a good idea to define that in some way, so that we're all clear and everyone's passing along the same information. And fortunately, to date, this has not been a big problem for the city, so it hasn't really been tested too much. That's a good thing, but as we move forward, it, it probably will be, so we could certainly make that change if, if the council would like, as we can at any time. If we find that this isn't addressing our needs as we move forward, we can certainly revisit it and make any appropriate changes at any time, so.
Do you wanna identify them?
I would like to see us identify the five holidays. Somebody mentioned Easter, but that's already covered, because it's always on a Sunday, so it's covered anyway, so.
Yeah.
We can just talk in the five days of November, the Fourth of July.
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and New Years.
Christmas and New Years.
Madam Mayor and council, if that is the direction, we'd entertain a motion to direct staff to do an, it would require an ordinance amendment, because this is our, an ordinance, this is city ordinance, it's just a procedural thing, but we'd need a, a motion and a second and a vote to direct staff for an ordinance amendment, which we'd bring back to you at your next council meeting to define those five holidays for your official approval of that.
Okay, I make a motion to add, make an amendment to the, adding the five holidays, meaning Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years.
I'm seconding it. How about Labor Day?
Labor Day.
Oh, yeah.
We don't work on Labor Day.
[laughter]
We can always add them, I mean, so be it, that's fine.
I think, if you can, Madam Mayor, I think the, the motion, as you're speaking, is to direct staff to.
Define the holidays.
To amend the ordinance, and so what staff will do is bring back to recommended language that we understand your intent is to hit the major holidays, so we'll, we'll put those in an ordinance revision, and then you can review that next time and.
I think that's good, we spent half hour already on this one page. Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then we'll expect to see that ordinance next time. It passes by vote.
Correct. And I think just to, in summary again, Madam Mayor, this, as mentioned, this issue came up as a result of some construction activity late last year. And so I think what you're hearing from staff is that you really have three mechanisms that we rely on as tools to help enforce noise ordinance as it relates to our growth. So you do have the ordinance in front of you, section 1005. So that's our current ordinance that we discussed and will bring back an amendment. The other two things that we've mentioned previously, and one of those got mentioned tonight, was the development agreement. So any new development agreements that we've, that we agreed, that we work with on developers, we'll look at language in there as well.
Sure.
And then when it's related to a public improvement project, where, for example, building a road, similar to Kings Point Road, we'll look at the construction language and the construction documents with those contractors. So those are our three basic tools that we use. And so we'll continue to look at the other two mechanisms as those develop.
Okay.
But at least tonight, we got some clear direction on modifying the ordinance to make it a little more clear. And then hopefully you as council are comfortable with the three tools that we have in trying to enforce this moving forward.
I think we will be, will be till we're proven wrong, so let's just go with that for now. So that sounds good. That's a five oh vote. I noticed that Senator Ozmick has come to visit us this evening. He's in the audience now. I was expecting you a little earlier, but we're happy to have you now. So good evening, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Sorry I was late. Tonight was the senior night for the girls' basketball team at Malmesaka High School. My daughter is a senior, so.
Uh-oh.
That's one of those things that you probably can't get away from.
Yes.
So I figured if I came in late, however, I was here last night.
I heard that. I heard that.
I had a little talk with my legislative assistant. We're not sure how it got on from Monday, but it got on from Monday. So note to self, you guys are closed on that Monday, so I won't do that again. But great to be here tonight. Just wanted to give you a little wrap up of what happened at session last year and what we're looking for at this year, as well as talk about some other things that I'm sure are hot on your list, particularly the water treatment issue.
Fair.
I learned quite a few things at the legislature this year. And one is time management. And the other one is that senators run on a different time schedule. You witnessed it tonight that I was late. Normally, we're 10 minutes late and I'm pretty, I try to be on time because I think it's being respectful to be on time, but all of my compatriots would always show up 10 minutes late to session, to anything. Well, not session, but any committee meetings. And eventually, the committee chair is even saying, excuse me, Ozmick, are you going to get the hang of this? Come in 10 minutes late, then you're going to be on time, so.
Why? Why? Tell me why, because.
I don't know.
It makes no sense to me.
I don't know. It's very unusual. It's how, it's a very unusual place, let's just put it that way.
Oh, okay.
And it was a very historic session in ways that I, in many ways, did not appreciate, but nonetheless, I enjoyed being there and I enjoyed every minute of it. Highlights that I saw, one of them you would probably think is a little strange. We had a 17-hour debate on the daycare unionization bill. I'll say what you want, but we held firm to our principles. We stood together as a caucus. And that paid off in the end because there's some very serious and damaging legislation which was put on hold as a result of our tenacity, that we would not bend on our principles when you crossed the line. So the other, the other one, the other highlight that I think I'd bring forward to you tonight is in our tax bill. And granted, I didn't like a lot that was inside of the tax bill, however, it did grant to municipalities and counties tax exempt status, which I always thought it was a backdoor maneuver by which we were able to take money, give it to you, but then take it back through the back door and put it back into the general fund. Never made any sense to me, and that was one of the good aspects. Unfortunately, there are many other bad aspects that hurt you and your constituents in their wallets. So that being said, one of the, one of the goals I had was to visit every city council meeting in my jurisdiction, that's 20 of you, and I was able to do it last year. And this year, you're number five on the list, so I've actually done more city council meetings than you have already this year. So, but I'm trying to get as many in before session because fun and games start a week from today, and it is going to be an interesting session. Another highlight that I actually got work done for you, didn't probably impact you a ton, but on 494, between 394 and Highway 5, the buses were not allowed to use those shoulders. Many places in the metro area, we were able to have buses, particularly in the heavy density rush hour traffic, be able to use the shoulders to get people back and forth. Southwest Transit came to me and said, well, why can't we? And I said the same thing. So I spent the first month trying to cajole, help MINDOT and Met Council say, well, why don't we just let them have the shoulders? You can use them. Met Transportation can use them. And it's not going to cost you anything and you can improve transit at no cost. And that's exactly what we as, I think, as legislators should be doing, is looking for biggest bang for your buck and zero cost is absolutely the biggest bang for your dollar. They said no, but I didn't give up. And that's one thing that I've learned also is that if you're right and you know you're right, don't give up. And about two months later, and I think in some ways, just to get me to stop asking them after every transportation meeting, I would keep asking the transportation guy, excuse me, when are we going to get the, when are you guys going to do the signs? When are you going to do the signs? Well, they did it probably to just have me stop, which unfortunately isn't going to help them because now Southwest also wants shoulder access from Highway 5 over to 35W. So we're going to go down the path again. I think they'll learn to just say yes the first time, so. But that is the kind of things that we need to do as a legislature. The other component that we got to was something called the Growler Bill. And you may not, may not know about this, but there's a burgeoning taproom business going on in the metropolitan area. And they sell these 64-ounce containers called Growlers. And it's very high-quality beer, it's microbrew. You can go into their taprooms on Saturdays and buy a pint for four or $5 and talk to the brewer who actually made the pint and buy this product. Well, they, there was, there's laws that restrict how much you can sell. It was up to three, if you sold a certain amount of Growlers, which I think was 3,000 gallons or something like that, you hit a cap and you can no longer sell it. So we lifted the cap up to 20,000. And now we have a burgeoning and continuing to improve small business community that is working its way through Minneapolis and St. Paul and other areas. There is one in my area in Excelsior. Excelsior Brewing is one of these type of taprooms, so.
Well, we would like to invite you this year to the Tonka Brew Fest at Gale Woods, which was a huge success last year, so you come and use your talents.
Absolutely. I.
November 1st.
The, believe me, legislators always like a good beer. What's coming up in this session? I spent all day at the Capitol today. Strangely enough, even when we're not in session, we're there quite often. And I was there working on, we had a three and a half hour transportation meeting. They are coming forth with some disturbing proposals. One is a, where, I'm sorry, a wholesale tax on gasoline. Not the gas tax, but they're going to tax it at the wholesaler, which is 5%. So if you have a $3 wholesale price of your gasoline going to the pump from the wholesaler, you're going to see a 15 cent increase in your gas taxes overnight. Now, they don't want to use the words gas tax. The words gas tax to a, to a member of the majority party is almost like garlic to vampires. They don't want to use the words gas tax. They want to use other words. They also are bringing forth a metropolitan sales tax increase of not a half cent, three quarters of a cent, which would change it from a quarter cent metropolitan-wide to a full one penny or one cent. These things are going to generate, between the two of them, $750 million. Unfortunately, most will be set not on roads and bridges, but on transit. So our proposal is very simple. We agree that the rental and lease taxes that are rental cars around the metropolitan area that we, in Minnesota that we sell, we could capture $32 million that normally is going to the general fund and put it into transportation. The other thing is, why don't we give MINDOT, who's another state agency, a state animal just like the city of Minotrist is, why don't we give them tax exempt status? It'll cost us money, but in the long run, if they save money, then they could spend that on roads instead of sending the money back into the general fund, just like the city of Minotrist did. These are the types of proposals that we believe in the minority caucus can be the ones that work for Minnesotans. So with that, we do have a bonding bill. Over a billion dollars is the current number. I suspect it's going to go down a little bit more than from that because billion is a, that's the breakpoint for a lot of people. Regarding your water, Councilmember Hunt and your administrator were in my office on Thursday. We met with the Met Council. I don't know if you've given that report yet or not.
Yeah, this morning, but you go ahead and do it.
But I, I thought we made a little bit of progress with them. I'm not terribly optimistic because you could tell they want those SAC charges. And they, I did, we did propose an alternative to hold off the dogs, at least temporarily, until they decide what they want to do. I think that did resonate with them. One other idea that I've been noodling around since we met, there may be some grant applications through the Clean Water Fund. I am a member of the Clean Water Council. You should investigate, go up to the MPCA website and see what they do have for grant applications. Those are generally not for water supplies that you're talking about, however, you never know when they might look at your application. I think we are moving towards a regional situation here because Mound has the same problem, you've seen in the paper, Spring Park has the same problem. Those regional type of efforts are ones that this legislature can step in with, with bonding money. Unfortunately, that doesn't help you right now because you need to deal with the situation right now. And I know particularly because I've seen a person I went to school with 31 years ago, I haven't seen her in 31 years, and she's in the back of the room, she knows who her senator is. So, and the answer is, they want help. At the state level, we'll do what we can for you. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of options. We can cajole, try and convince the Met Council, but that's probably not going to make them drop those SAC charges because that's $2.7 million and legislatively, there's nothing in there that allows them a waiver. And we can't draft legislation fast enough. Even if I could get it through either one of the houses, we can't draft it fast enough where you could get consensus to do it. It would, it's probably not going to help you at this point. But check the Clean Water Funds. There may be some funds available through federal sources. For that, you would want to contact Representative Paulson's office. There may be some assistance there, but from a purely, what can we do in the next three months during session? There's not a ton of work that we can do. That doesn't mean that I'm not willing to help. And when the Met, when our Met Council representative, Munt, comes forth with whatever she has for a response, then we'll take it from there and try and make some additional moves to try and get you some options where you can do the right thing, because obviously, you want to do the right thing for your residents. With that, I'll answer any questions. I don't want to take all of your time. I'll answer any questions, any, you know, issues that you want to bring forth to me to take back to the Capitol. It's, again, it's a pleasure to serve you and I come in once a year. I always want to be here once a year, whether you like it or not. But I also want to make sure I'm available to you. So if you do have any issues as you brought forward, Councilmember Hunt, contact my office. I'm more than willing to help out where I can. I may not be successful, but that doesn't mean I can't try.
I think we have your phone number because it's the same number for years and years and years, only just a different person now.
I'm hard to, yeah, you're right. I'm not hard to miss. I do have Jen Olson's phone number, so if you know that number, you know my number.
That's good. Well, we really appreciate you coming to telling us and being honest with us about our water situation, especially in particular. I can't think of anything right of hand, can you? Usually the staff brings us some items, but we do appreciate that you came and that you helped us. And then we're looking forward to you helping us again.
Where I can. I mean, I'd love to kick over a rock and find $5 million for you. Unfortunately, there's, those rocks are hard to find.
But if you did, would you give it to us?
Well, no. If you got to me first. Because the city of, city of Excelsior and the city of Yezetta are talking about a local option sales tax and there's a lot of different irons in the fire right now. City of Maple Plan, I'm working with a crosswalk across Highway 12 to get them some retroactive funding, you know? But, you know, it all depends on what you need. And I know you've got Highway 7, that's a state highway. You got the roundabout put in, I saw you open that up. I'm not a fan of roundabouts, but, you know, if that's the way it needs to be.
Oh, it was their idea. It was their idea and they gave us a half a million bucks for it, so we're all over it.
You're right. When they write the check, it's a whole lot easier to do it, you know? And with Met, with Met Transit, it doesn't really come out into your area, it goes out as far as Mound. That's something we obviously want to maintain, that express service, because it is very popular. And those types of express services are something that people generally use. I'm working with all of those opt-outs, which are Southwest Transit, Plymouth MetroLink, to make sure that when we go towards transit, we also keep an eye on them because their express service is very, very popular.
Right, and we don't want to lose it.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming and enjoy your daughter's senior year and we'll see you later.
It's amazing how fast it goes, isn't it? I swear that your time starts accelerating the older you get and the more years you have. You, it's almost like every year is now, goes two years faster. I don't know why. And at the legislature, and then it grinds to a halt when you get the gavel and that's on Tuesday, so.
All right.
Then the fun begins.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, council, the next item on our agenda is number seven, which is the administrative items, number A, which is the resolution approving the claims. Make a motion to accept the claims as written.
Second.
We're going to second it to approve the resolution for the claims that were, as it was presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion will carry five zero. Now we have council reports. I don't have too much. I had Northwest League last time. It's a kind of a going group. I have planning commission too, and then we are having planning commission again the next two months, so things are on the rise, I would say. And I have Rotary, of course, and Communications Commission, we already had that too, but there were no complaints from St. Bonnie. Tomorrow, I think Mike and I have a meeting with St. Bonnie about merger and that sort of thing, so that's what I'm doing.
No, I don't think I have any.
We had a LMCD meeting last week and we had discussions with the marina owners and they asked for some changes, kind of an updating of the LMCD code to give them a little bit more flexibility on how they configure their docks. And I think for the most part, people are open to that. The marinas on the lake do a lot of things for the public.
Right.
A lot of, so we want to recognize that and we don't want to micromanage them. So that was a very positive discussion. And then we talked about inspections and the role of the LMCD in watercraft inspection has been shrinking. So kind of looking at maybe we totally get out of that and let someone else take it over. So we're still discussing that. So that was last week for LMCD.
Is that like for invasive species inspections?
Yeah, it's the boat inspections. And usually they hire, we get a DNR grant and then we hire inspectors to do the inspections. And it's not every, it's not every access point, there's certain DNR access points that are done. Halsted is one of them that's covered, but it's not that they wouldn't be covered, they'd just be covered by a different organization. And those things are under discussion, no final decisions have been made.
Okay, Arlie?
No, we have no, nothing to report.
Bob?
Two things. One, first of all, on Saturday, last Saturday, the WCC, West Tonka Community Commerce, as you all know, had the Moonlight Trail event, which was very, very, very successful. And on behalf of West Tonka Community Commerce members, thanks for all the volunteers, participants and sponsors to make it a very, very successful event. The only other thing I have is this Thursday, February 20th at 7:00 PM, the St. Bonnie the St. Bonnie Fire Advisory Committee will be meeting at the St. Bonnie Fire Department, which I will be going to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Steph?
Madam Mayor and Council, there's nothing more to add at this timing. If you want to talk about the next item on the agenda, upcoming meeting topics.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
I'm sorry to butt in. I do have one quick item.
I didn't feel the tap on the shoulder.
My arm isn't quite there. I'll make it real quick. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you probably recall, last year, we had a first of our kind Lake Area Public Forum meeting on the heroin meeting at the Gillespie Center. And as kind of a carryover to that, we've, we continue, this group continues to meet to, to address up and coming trends or topics. And so, with that said, on March 6th, at the Gillespie Center, we're going to have a second meeting on relationship abuse. Not, again, that it's an overwhelming problem, but kind of a preemptive move to try and address some of these issues before they become problems in the community. And so, with that, one of the major presenters will be Carol Arthur from the Domestic Abuse Project. And then, we're also looking to have a meeting potentially in April on marijuana and some of the issues surrounding that, not just the legalization, but how it's different today than years ago, and so on and so forth. So, I'll certainly continue to push this information out as it becomes available. And I did put a copy of this flyer in your packet tonight. And I, I think on that flyer, there's the website. It's called Our Lake Community, www.rlakecommunity.com. That is the website that all of this information and all that meeting information is on. And there's all kinds of links on there and, and resources and so on and so forth. So, I invite you to go ahead and take a look at that website. And if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, certainly forward them to me, and I can pass that on to the group. So, that's it. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, Paul. Nothing else. Do you want to talk about upcoming, well, setup upcoming meeting topics? I don't think we're going to do that tonight, are we? We've had a long day and talked about a lot of things. We don't know if we've actually come up with topics yet. I have some ideas.
So, I just wanted to, yes, so Madam Mayor and Council, I think, as we mentioned even in our work session earlier today, that really kind of making sure that we have time on the agenda for you and identifying opportunities or topics that you want to see brought forward for future meetings. Just a couple of things that I know from a staff level that we have on the horizon. Again, after our session earlier today, our strategic plan, there's some things we need to bring back from our strategic plan conversation. We also will be having a reimbursement agreement coming forth with Red Oak, assuming with the approval of the development. So, we do have some agreements coming forward regarding reimbursements. We have our pavement management plan coming forward likely in the work session in April. We do have, again, based on some conversations tonight, a presentation likely at March 3rd regarding the Bolt and Mink Value Engineering Study. Soon as we get that wrapped up by our March 3rd meeting. And then also, staff bring forward the ordinance revision as we discussed earlier tonight. So, there's, again, kind of a handful of items we see upcoming for the next couple of council meetings. Also, as noted, doing a note of correction, as Mr. Grimm just pointed out to me. Our next meeting is March 3rd. 5:30 is the work session. The agenda says 5:00.
I was going to ask you about that, if we, we changed that already.
So, if there's, so those are the items we foresee coming. And obviously, as we get closer to that date, our agendas tend to fill up a little bit more than that as some issues arise. If there's anything else the council wishes to direct us to put on the agenda.
Okay, so 5:30, what, what was on the work session agenda for 5:30 on the 3rd?
Right now, a lot of the strategic plan type conversations.
Do you think we could add water sustainability and have somebody come in, like Ellie Alhassan, from the Met Council, maybe come in and give a presentation just to talk about some of those items? And the only reason why I'm pushing the timing is because one of the things that Mark Erickson and I talked about was thinking about new development and encouraging them to be on a different irrigation mode than drinking water. So, if we're going to encourage that, we should talk about it.
I think it would be a good idea for that particular speaker that you're talking about in sustainability to include the Planning Commission because they get all those.
Oh, yeah, that was the other thing is, I want to both planning and parks because they would all be involved, yeah. Because we had talked about having a joint work session with.
We do talk about that once a year, so.
Once a year. And I think that this would be a good topic because if we're going to lead the way as a city and irrigate our parks with stormwater, that would be a good thing to talk about with parks, planning. Obviously, we're going to ask developers to consider alternative ways to irrigate lawns. That would be great for the Planning Commission, and they might have some input and ideas. Yeah, I think that's great.
If developers start hearing it first from park and then planning, and then they get to us, it won't, it won't be any big surprise.
Well, that's good.
Yes, they will already be working on it, so I think that's a good idea.
Do you think that we could do that with those three groups?
Yeah, so, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hunt, what I would recommend is I have the contact information for, for her, and so I can call her to check her availability for.
Oh, it's he?
He, excuse me, for the, either the March or April work session.
And it doesn't have to be him, but he was one of the presenters at the Metro.
So, we could line up a speaker or, or more on that topic, and then also invite the Park and Planning Commission. So, if you choose, staff can set that up and arrange.
That'd be awesome. So, do we have to make that as a direction?
Yeah, yes, you do.
Okay.
By the way, before you do it, let us get it all together. That's a great idea. I think we should also schedule a time either before or after for the council itself to talk with our staff about the very things that you're talking about. And then we can have a whole session with both commissions, so they're all on the same page. Because I know you know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if the rest of us do, so.
Well, I think that's why we wanted to present it, because they'll kind of go over what's going on with our aquifers, some of the reuse ideas. Like St. Anthony has done, those types of things. I mean, very abbreviated, just to bring us up to date and, you know. Well, you've already been to the presentation, but I think, I think it'd be available for all of the groups to hear the same presentation. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I think, I do think that we should, if we're going to consistently have work sessions, I don't think every work session should have a speaker, for one thing, because then we never have any conversation ourselves. Speakers always take up more time than they say, and so, in, in some cases, in most cases, it's fine. So, we just figure out the timing, that's all.
Right, and I'm sure this is just going to be the start of this conversation.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's huge, so.
But we can also ask whoever the speaker is for some ideas and whether what we're even thinking about is feasible. Because we know eventually, people are going to have to get off the drinking water supply to irrigate. That's, we know that's coming. How we get there, I'm not sure.
It's certainly helpful to be on the front end. You know, it's hard to retrofit, you know, communities. And, you know, we can certainly retrofit parks much easier. But to be on the front end and require it upfront is certainly more practical and efficient, so.
And it'll be too late for like Hunter's Crest, but it might not be too late for the second phase of, who knows? I don't know if it's too late for Will and Co.
And we have a few townhouses that use that kind of thing, too, and, and they have trees growing in there, and then they have their own lawns, obviously, but, yeah, I, no, I think we should do it. So, if you want to do it on the 3rd, though, we do need a motion, though, so staff knows what we're talking about here.
Well, I'll make a motion to have a water sustainability discussion with the parks, planning, and city council all together for a work session at 5:30 on the 3rd.
I second it. If they're available.
If they're available.
Okay. We moved and seconded to have Parks and Planning come at 5:30 on Monday, the 3rd of March to talk about sustainability water issues. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion will carry 5-0. Anything else that you need, Mike?
Unless there's any other direction from, from council, no. The other thing I would say to that also, I'll check the availability of our speaker, our speakers. If they're not available for March 3rd, I'll check their availability for our second meeting in March, which I assume would be the 17th. And then I'll also look for their availability in the first meeting in April. And I think one of the things we talked about earlier today is scheduling more work sessions. And so, if, if we do end up dedicating most of March 3rd to this topic, you may want to then, you may want to think about as a council then having another work session on that March 17th, really to hone in on some of the other items that we, we have on our bucket.
Or do you think we should try to do it on a Monday for like a Planning Commission? So, have the parks and us attend a Planning Commission meeting? Do they have time to do it or not?
It depends on what they have on their agenda, I suppose.
Well, the, the next Planning Commission meeting is next week. There's, there's only one item, so time, you know, time's a little short for that. The March meeting will likely have a pretty full agenda coming.
I think it's a great time to do an outside thing. Go over to Gale Woods, or go out to the park or whatever, and have a meeting.
You could do that, that would be fun, yeah. Have something fun to do with our commissions.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you for your direction.
I just have one thing, and it's kind of a small deal, and it's been kind of on the back burner for a while. I don't know if I mentioned it to Mike once, because I know the regulations as far as fuel storage is getting a lot more strict. And I don't know what the council thinks about looking into, there's a lot of Holiday Quick Trip, they do fleet accounts. So, we would, I mean, it's not going to work for our equipment, but at least for our officers and stuff like that. Because sometimes you actually get fuel cheaper through a fleet account than you can buy bulk. I mean, bulk fuel is not any cheaper. I mean, I don't, I don't even, I don't store bulk fuel for anything anymore for that reason because it, the regulations are getting really tough. And I know there's been some talk about replacing some fencing out here and put automatic gates in so the officers can get in at night. That may eliminate that. We don't need to have, we're, you know, they're in the city anyway, now in Holiday Quick Trip. Some of these fleet accounts, they'll throw in perks like pre-car washes, stuff like that. I don't know if it's, if it's a, well, if it's something. I mean, I don't want, I don't want somebody to spend a lot of time.
Are we getting a discount now? On gas?
We're buying a fatality co-op.
So, we buy.
Maybe Paul would like to answer since he's the one with the cars.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I know that we do have an account at Quick Trip. In the event that our, there's no power or something to that effect, there have been times where that's been down, so we've had to go there and use that.
You get a discount on that?
I, I, you know, I'd have to look into that. I don't believe we, I don't believe we do currently, but I don't believe it's set up as a, a fleet account. It's more or less an account if we need to pick up a couple of supplies for a meeting or something along those lines. We do wash our squads there. And we do get a discount, a fleet discount for that, but that is done through the corporate office. They send us the cards.
But you purchase it.
But we do purchase car washes at a reduced rate under a fleet program.
Mike, I'm going to forward you the corporate officer for Quick Trip that we work with because our company works with Quick Trip. And there is a gallon-per-gallon discount, plus also every year, she sends me a hundred car washes.
A hundred?
So, if we, given that conversation, Madam Mayor and Council.
Now, you cut your own deal, but I will give you the name of the person that handles our account at corporate office.
If you could afford that, that'd be great. What we could do is add this to a future work session item where staff can take, fix and look into it a little further. I know we did this here a couple of years ago. I think at that time, councilmembers didn't go ask a lot of questions regarding fuel and fleets. And so, we studied this a couple of years ago. Maybe some of the councilmembers remember what we did, maybe it's been four years ago now.
Yeah, it's a long time.
So, we spent some time on it a few years ago, but we certainly could take a look at it, you know.
Yeah, give, give this, our contact a call over there and just see what she will do for you.
Do we need to vote on it?
I don't think so. We'll just add it to a future work session.
They can check it out, and that's a good.
Well, let's call, call her first and see what she can do for you.
So, you'll forward me that information?
I'll forward you that information.
Oh, we have a, a new visitor.
Yes, we, we are finishing, about to adjourn. Mayor Wyble, can we help you?
Just wanted to say hello and.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, great service by the police department and the meetings with Mayor Fisher and Senior Minister Eric Pumph. And very good for both cities, I believe, and sharing different ideas. And I think for the next few months, we'll start seeing some of those changes come through.
You're doing such a great job. Why don't you come right up to the podium and say all those nice things? Well, thank you very much for coming and saying that. You can come in and see us anytime, we're always glad to see you. Exactly, that was understood. Okay, we are done, so I'm looking for adjournment.